As I mentioned in the email that I sent, Megan is going to join us at 7:30 rather than at 7 o'clock because it turns out that works better for her schedule. And she will be on the Zooms. In which case, I would like to move on to the minutes of August 15. And is there a motion to approve them?
I just noticed that my last name is specific.
Oh, did I spell your last name wrong?
Yeah, it says Kim.
Oh, I'm gonna change that right now.
I know, we just met, so.
It's probably autocorrect.
No, I'm sure it was, yeah.
I'm even more embarrassed because the entire time I've known you, when you used it, that last name, I pronounced it Kim.
It is Kim.
I thought you said Kim.
I spelled, no, she just.
I know, I thought you just said Kim.
Now, when I lived in North Carolina, you can't tell the difference between those two. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But up here, it's more.
I apologize, it is so corrected. And I'm gonna check the ones from 29, too.
Do we have a motion? I don't remember having one.
There's no motion on table.
I don't think so.
Motion to accept the minutes of the August 15 meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you very much. We do not have any publics. So let us move on to the director's report.
Okay, uh, so I don't normally bring attention to the calendar as I just send it out and let people look at it, ask questions if they have any. But I want to just again, say praises of particularly Julia, who really kind of picked up the slack and had been possibly in the calendar nominally with programming for children and young adults, but also some additional adult programming. We have a great workshop happening on Saturday, the 23rd. Pastel artist named Greg Maycheck or Maycheck, I'm not sure how it's pronounced, who's going to lead as many as 30 adults here in the meeting to do a pastel drawing of a Georgia M Keith. So.
A calla lily, I believe it is.
What's that?
I believe the flower is a calla lily.
Yeah, right, yep. So everyone will do the same thing and he'll lead people through various techniques and that sort of thing. And that's actually a Friends-supported program. But I do think it's remarkable that, you know, again, we're hitting the ground running with Julia now in her new position as of the 5th. And this is already well underway, so we're really in good shape. And I'm very grateful to all of their hard work.
Can I, can I just say that for all of you? I started the Facebook page, so for some reason, I always get emailed, like every time there's action on the Facebook page. And the action, like the number of events, the action on our Facebook page is like at like an all-time high, right? Like since she started, like it just feels like I have to figure out how to shut that off.
Yeah, actually, that is bothersome, you want me to, I don't, I don't know that you can mute it, but if you want me to take you.
I'll figure it out, I just, yeah, that's fine.
It is a lot.
It's a good thing, a good lie, is my point.
Yeah. I just want to mention very briefly, without going into any details, because I have none to give. But we are continuing to try to get some sort of resolution at the roof situation. We're trying to meet the town council. That's been postponed, something that we're gonna meet this weekend. That seems to be pushed back, and I don't have a day yet for that. But I'm hoping that we will be meeting soon and you know, coming up with next steps for that. Also, no update on the access hardware. I did reach out to my expectable and did not get a response on that. In happier news, we actually had a very nice visit with Andrea Bunker from the MBLC, who was our liaison to that organization and worked with us for a good part of the process when we were building the library. And she came out for a post-occupancy visit when they come out after you've been in the building for a while. At this point, like something, well, it's one we've been in here for a long time. But open to the public for a year and a half. And you know, if you want to come out and ask what's working, what is not working, what would you do differently, you know, they're trying to evolve as they go through this. So that's great, we talked for like three hours a couple weeks ago. And the report, I believe I set the report around as an attachment so you can see essentially the conversation that we had. The kind of coincidentally, right after that visit, we kind of called from the director at Montague. They're also like, they're about to go through this process. And they're like at the very beginning of it. And that director, similar to my situation, is sort of getting dropped in right at the front end of it. And so they're gonna come down with a contingent of, I guess, staff and trustees and maybe members of their building committee to to just tour the new building, talk about the process or experience. Again, things that work, things that didn't work, things to watch out for. That's 3:00 PM on September 21st. And anyone that's around that, you know, feels like being part of that conversation is more than welcome to join.
3pm?
What's that?
3pm.
3pm.
Oh, I might be able to do that.
Uh, I am in the middle of the reporting season for the, again, for the MBLC for what eventually becomes our state aid payment. We're turning over the work for the statistical stuff, usage, you know, circulation, those kinds of things. And now looking on the financial report that's due in October. Always fun. And as you were, Julia has taken over as head of youth services. And we are in the process of scheduling interviews for the vacant youth services coordinator position now. It looked like there was potentially some interest from an internal candidate processing elimination. You know, that was, that was audacious. And then she subsequently withdrew her interest in the position because of other developments. So we're back to a, you know, full, full search. We've got three good candidates that we're going to interview. And we feel that we're in good shape as far as that search goes. And that's more or less what I have.
I just want to report in terms of the director's annual evaluation that I will send you all a link to an online version that's, for those of you who were with her last year, that is essentially the same survey tool that was used last year. But I've, excuse me, put it online. I already have responses from staff members. Susan and I created a very different form for them because their viewpoint is not that of looking at the job description and evaluating performance against that. I glanced at it briefly to see what the responses were and my sense is that staff members took time and provided fairly complete answers. And I think there is some useful information for going forward. And just to let you know that that is in the offing. And I would like to try to have that on the agenda for next time to go through that.
Can I ask a fair, fine question? Do you want us to take the survey or just so we can see it?
I will send it to you to complete, please, and thank you.
Okay, so didn't we already do this this year?
Nope.
Seems like just last year.
It was last December, well, it was last October, November. We did the evaluation in December and not since then. So this will be for FY '23, which is a little bit awkward for the people who were just elected. But it is what it is. Community feedback.
Jess, you wanna vote, you want me to vote?
Do you wanna, do you wanna start us off? Well, I, I have the right document here.
Sure. I'm not sure we can finish this in 15 minutes. I know that we're respecting Megan, but.
Well, we can continue.
Exactly. So the, our charge was to collect community feedback. And that was the charge essentially. So really, before we know what we need to do, we need to know what the goals of this feedback are, what we're hoping to learn so that we can come up with the adequate strategy to collect that feedback, right? So I gave a number of examples in the email. I'm not sure anyone got a chance to look through that. But I do think our guiding principles should be, we should only collect feedback on things that we're willing and able to change, right? So we're not able to double the size of the building. We're not, you know, there's certain things that we're not able to do. We can't knock down this wall and make this bigger. Like there's certain things that we just really can't do. So we shouldn't ask about things that we can't do or that we're unwilling to do. So an example is, my, my best example I can give is hours, right? So if we're looking to add, we're gonna go to the town and we're gonna say, we need to have four more hours. We need to have support for that, the property to the staff, et cetera, in our budget. And our goal is to ask, what four additional hours should we put on our calendar? That's something we could do, right? If we all said, we wanna go and ask for four additional hours, we collect community feedback and they'd say, we want these hours to be, you know, whatever. Wednesday morning. I'm making it up, right? That's something we can be in charge of. But we shouldn't go out and ask if we're not willing or able to go and ask to add hours. And we shouldn't put out a more open thing about like, what hours work for you? What hours don't work for you? Because if we do that and everyone comes back and says, I want you to be open all day Saturday, all day Sunday, right? Like that might be outside of our abilities.
You did that when we, remember we did hours before? We did a survey like that and we actually had very specific.
Correct, because we were looking to add some additional hours. And I remember having that conversation at the same time, like we need to be.
How many, how many years ago was that?
Oh, oh, yeah, before the.
Like in the old building, okay.
But it might be really interesting to compare and see if availability or the times are the same or different, if that's something that we wanna pursue.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm just, I'm just using that as an example. I'm not saying that anyone even wants to ask about hours. I'm just giving that as an example of, you know, something that we would use the survey for, but we would, we, depending on why we're asking it, blowing up all the hours, we're gonna throw all the hours up, or we're still gonna be open 30 hours a week, or whatever hours are we, 32, 34, 35? If we still wanna be open 35, but it can be any 35, let's find out the best 35 for the community, right? If we wanted to do that, we could. Or we could say, we're gonna try to pursue four extra hours. But we should only do things that we actually want to and can change. And we should only match the collection device to what we're trying to collect. Again, to the teen room, if we wanna understand why all the teens in哈, they aren't using the teen room, we would not give a survey. We would go to Hopkins Academy, work with them, set up focus groups. We'd have some focus groups here. You know, we do other things to try to get feedback. So, you know, before we can do anything, we need to understand, what are we trying to do? What are we hoping to do?
And I think, Allison, you said to me, you put this really well, like, we also don't want to put something out there that then suggests to people something that we actually can't follow up on, right? So I think the hours makes this one really obvious. If it's totally unfeasible for us to have staff in here on Sundays,
Yes.
we shouldn't ask people wide open because then that raises that expectation. And then they're disappointed that we don't deliver it.
Exactly. Yep.
So.
Can I just ask how this information is gonna be gathered? Are you sending out questionnaires or?
That's what I'm trying to determine. So it depends on what we're trying to, trying to, you know, achieve by community feedback. What do we mean by community feedback? Why are we collecting it? Again, to the teen room, if we wanna know about teenagers, survey is not the best way. If we want to know about something very specific about hours, probably a survey is the best way to go. Joanne?
As someone who just came to the board while this was already going, I just wondered like, what made you originally think that you wanted community? I'm not putting it down, asking why, where did the idea come from? Because that might help me understand a little bit more. Usually, if you want community feedback, it's because you're specifically looking for something.
Yep. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, but this all came out of, Lynn had an idea of having a, like now that the library was complete, we're like moving into like, okay, we're like the dust has settled. Now, what is our vision for the library in the next five years or 10 years or something like that? And one of the things that popped up that we might wanna do is collect community.
So it's really for a visioning activity then?
That's just how it seemed to be.
It was, okay, we have this new and fabulous space. We can finally come in the building and do things together in the building. What kinds, how do members of the community see the possibilities for using the new space? Is where it started?
That's a, it almost seems like a focus group more than a, that seems really open-ended to me, like.
And that's why I think we're kind of trying to actually narrow it down for now to make this a more contained and less like big, big vision.
She can.
This is, this is us, this, this is our meeting.
Oh.
So, but there was a conservation committee meeting apparently that we had to wait for that to end.
Oh, so great.
Yeah, so if we can narrow it, that would be great. If we can't narrow it and it's just a visioning exercise, that's fine too. But I would agree with you that if, if this is a visioning exercise, if this is part, you know, part one of visioning the, you know, Hadley Public Library for the next 10 years, probably a survey is not the way to go. I mean, I would agree, it's probably a series of focus groups or some sort of roadshow. Maybe a talk at town meeting with a quick survey, like tell us, you know, like a QR code, tell us your top three things. I mean, I'm just tossing it out there. That's.
That's a little creepy.
Yeah, how's that, how's that working?
The Panopticon.
It's this.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so it's supposed to follow the voice.
I thought that was the speaker.
It is.
It is.
Oh, it's the speaker.
Yeah, so when we're joined by our guest, the sound should come from that. Hopefully, we haven't used it in a while.
We use these at work, they work really well. Yeah. So anyway, we're opening it up for you because Jess and I have had plenty of time to sort of talk back and forth with each other. We don't wanna do it from each other. And we do want to hear from the staff eventually. But since the staff in some ways is not empowered to make the changes, they hear what community, some of the things that are filtering out from the community. But like, we're the ones who have a separate direction for the library, you and the trustees. So that's why we thought we would start here and, you know, then go and say to the staff, hey, we're doing this focus group or we're having this survey and this was the goal of the survey. Can you help us think what else are we missing in this topic, et cetera? Does the library have a comment box? Suggest, the old suggestion box.
We do not, and we get a lot of, we get a lot of comments by, you know, by email or certainly we have a lot of people that contact us through the towns. But the website has a forum where you can submit a question. I guess that's when people have not figured out what our actual email address is. And Jeff for forward that, forwards that to me. We don't have a proper suggestion box. We could have one.
You know, you could do is put a box on the website that says suggestion box and have it linked to either the trustee's email or worse.
And that's a topic that could be explored in a survey or in focus groups because I know we've talked about redesigning the website. What would you like to see a member of the community on the website?
Could we make it suggestions or requests or something to make it more personal?
For, sorry, I'll conflict a comment.
Well, I mean, as you're talking about the suggestion box, I was thinking, well, why not, why not just have a request box? Because that is more immediate if somebody's filling it out.
Or, but what do you mean, just a request for like?
Like if I saw a suggestion box about the library, I would think, oh, it's fine. But if somebody said, if it said request, I would think, well, maybe get more of so-and-so or something. It's just a thought, you know? Suggestion seems sort of cold. It seems less personal. And I think the purpose is to engage personally would be.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it would be, I think, nice to have, if we were able to have some sort of a forum that you could, I mean, this would be useful information anyway. But just from an operational standpoint, not necessarily from a survey standpoint, but just have, having a way for people to leave a comment within a set of categories. So I have a comment related to collections, I have a comment related to, you know, use of the building, or I have a comment about.
Hours.
Hours, whatever the case might be.
But if you call it, I'm concerned about calling it a request because then that sounds like we're gonna be obligated to do whatever you said you requested.
Well, I requested that, why didn't you do it?
Get this book from.
People are very optimistic if that's, if that's how they think the world works.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
But just, no, I hear you. Calling it feedback, just to say, you know, we'd love to hear your feedback on, you know, on these areas.
Right, right.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, what you said about the different categories, that's good.
I think you just have to speak, Joanne, because that's how things are working.
I, I just wonder, like, kind of an open-ended, like, community feedback. It seems like when we were building the library, we had a specific vision. We have vision for a long time. It seems almost to me like we should go through a visioning activity. And from that, then we should get feedback, right? Because then if we have a vision, then we would know what, like, say we, we did a visioning and we had community members and we had, you know, a group of people visioning. And the visioning came out that we wanna add more like, you know, in the next five years, we want more hours in library. Then we know what to ask. But without a visioning session and like a plan for the next five years, it seems like your task could be really like big and open-ended without like a solid vision for the library.
Are you suggesting an internal visioning exercise with us and maybe the staff? Or are you suggesting going first to the community and having the visioning exercise with the community? Or both simultaneously, like.
We would, we did run a few of them last time, right? We did, we had different versions. We had a community one where we talked to, we invited community. And we actually invited, we had one with teens, I think. And then we had one with the trustees and staff. And that was really to build, you know, the vision of our library. But if we are now here, like if you say, then what is the next thing? Obviously, we're not gonna build in five years, but we wanna be doing something in five years. What is something? Like.
So I, I think like there may be like multiple options here, right? Like I think what you're describing is, I think where we kind of started, right? Which is sort of thinking like, we need to, we need to, we need to know what our priorities are. We need to know kind of what, you know, what the vision is for the library. And I think that since we, since we were there and then the, the place that we're at now, I think we got to was like, that feels really big and ambitious. And maybe what we need to do now is actually something that's more specific around particular, you know, like just focus on programming or just focus on hours or do something that's more specific and maybe visioning happens at a later date. I, I guess I, I wonder kind of what our appetite is for something that feels sort of big and, I don't know, when I think about going through like a process, like a visioning process, that to me feels like big, takes a lot of investment, both in terms of sort of time and creativity and then in terms of follow-through. And so I think one question that's fair to ask is, which direction are we feeling inclined to move in?
And I think that's the right question to ask. I mean, I agree with you 100% of like a true visioning exercise, like when you're there or when you have a new strategic plan at your campus. It's a, like almost a year-long exercise, at least a nine-month exercise. It does take a lot of efforts. You usually get a lot out of it. You usually get way more than you can possibly use in that timeframe. But it does help you set like a real strategic direction. So if we feel collectively like we need that, then I would be in favor of going that way. But I also would be to say, if like, your question was spot on. If we don't feel like we have it in us as a board, as a director, as staff, because it would take all of us to make this work.
Or if it doesn't feel like we need it now.
Or if we don't feel like we need it, then we shouldn't do it. We should say, hey, what areas are we missing? Do we need to know what goes in a library of things, right? To just take like another, like a small example of something that I know we're working on the library of things. Do we just wanna know what do people want to see in this, right? Or do we wanna know what four extra hours would we use once we go and ask for those four extra hours, right? I, I'm purposely picking things that I think are relatively simple.
I, I also think though, if you're thinking about being left money in will, if you were thinking about raising money for the future of the library, that's the first thing people wanna know, like.
What are you gonna do with it?
In five years, you know, show me your vision. Like what is your vision? Who are you? Why should I give to you? I, I, you know, I know it's a lot of work, but I feel strongly that, personally, that like just adding willy-nilly kind of questions is like, just finding things to add without really getting input. Like say we get a, say we, I'll use the example of we, we meet with a community and they're like, we don't really think the library needs to be open more, but we'd love to have like Zoom programming, I'm making something up, right? Zoom programming at home that connects right to the library. That's like something I could see in five years. But we wouldn't know that if we didn't have visioning. And if we just will it, we had said, oh, we're gonna add more hours. We didn't really get that feedback to know that people are thinking differently about the library. They want access from home or whatever, you know, whatever it is. I know I'm making something up on the fly, but I just feel like we're not really, we're not using the tools if we just, the resources is the better word, of a community before, if we just go at things random.
I wonder, I'd love to see kind of what the results of the last visioning process were. I mean, because it's like, could we look at that and perhaps ask ourselves, does this still feel?
It's irrelevant. I'll just tell you now, it's about what, what do we need to consider in building a new library? It was a lot, there was a lot of physical infrastructure stuff that would be irrelevant to us today.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, there was other stuff.
Okay.
And there was a lot of, like, we felt like it's, it's our home, it's our community there. How are we gonna bring that type of thing here, right? It was things that are just relevant today. I don't think it would be useful, okay?
But would it inform some sort of understanding of how successful were we in achieving as many goals or desires or wishes that were expressed as possible? Are there still unmet demands? Or were there requests for spaces to do things? And are we doing those things in those spaces? It might, I mean, I understand how to some degree it's not relevant. Relevant. But it might be worthwhile in the same way to look at this.
Hey Megan, can you, can you hear us?
Apparently not.
Do you have the right, do you have that, the right microphone chosen? That always pings me up when I'm trying to connect. See where it says audio down to your left in this? Nope.
No, I think in the close-up menu.
Go to the Zoom. Forgot this device manager.
Second.
You just wanna chatter, we're working on it. See that audio down below to the left?
Oh.
Yep. So if you click the up arrow, it might be looking for the wrong.
Can you hear us now?
Nope.
Sorry.
Yeah, click the up arrow.
Yeah.
See it's a.
Meeting, that's what it is, right?
Or is it?
Test, go to test, get your microphone.
Test, test?
Try another speaker. Can't hear.
Is the output level down to zero? Is, is that why none of that is lit up?
You wanna chatter until we're working on it?
So where's the chat?
Unmute your speaker or increase volume to hear other participants. See that up there? I think John's right.
Right over her head.
See that? So you may hear on a mute. That's a different, that's a, that's. Can you hear us now?
No, no response.
Which sometimes I hit by accident. Now that's just like sound. Okay, so the owl can hear us because it follows my voice, but the, this is not connected to that.
Sorry, where's the chat on? So I had done some like.
Yep.
Where is it?
Oh, there is it. That's weird.
Uh, if you go up to view at the.
Yep.
No, no. Try apps.
I'm sorry, Jess?
Next, between raise hands and whiteboard. Wonder if it is listed as an app or something. It's, I, I don't think I've ever seen it.
I've never seen.
Should I just go to my own seat and get, like, get out of the phone or something?
Yeah, I mean, you could also di- that's a good point. Dial into the Zoom on your phone. We'll just use your phone for the sound. Sorry. But we can't hear her, right? We can put the loudspeaker. This is a low-tech solution, but we're working on it.
Well, Alex, maybe you can help.
Who's that? It's not them?
Maybe you can help.
No audio.
So there's somehow no audio on the owl. The owl can hear us and see it moves with the, with us, but it doesn't. Well, we have, we tried that. Yeah, we had that.
Did you pass me your remote? Please, sir. Can you try it now?
Nope, no response.
Okay.
It's not you. You could switch the phone audio. We're trying to call.
Could we just quit Zoom and restart it? That often fixes a lot of things.
Wait, that's my phone.
He's calling.
There we go.
What did you do? Can you show us?
Rent.
Oh.
It was the TV.
Okay.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Wonderful. Thanks for your patience and endurance on our lives. Um, I don't know where I came in in your conversation, so I'll, I'm waiting for instruction.
No, we're waiting for you. Go for it.
Your turn.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Sujinsky. I work with the Hampton Hampshire Conservation District. Um, our office is located over at the USDA building right by Hampton Bagel on Route Nine. And, um, we all work remotely, so that doesn't really seem to matter anymore. So we are sort of organizational neighbors. Um, we represent both, um, Hampton and Hampshire counties and are both public outreach for conservation issues. And education especially, and with, uh, producers. So I have a counterpart who works directly with, um, Allmannered producers, foresters, things like that. Um, so Patrick and I have been chatting about a new grants program that we are offering for the next year. Uh, to partner with municipal entities. Uh, we are specifically interested in libraries because of the high traffic and kind of community. Central community, um, services that libraries are now performing. They're just fantastic places to reach. Uh, our neighbors with different fun activities and informational resources and things like that. So first off, thank you for allowing us to distribute our plant sale, um, items to the, our customers this year. That back best patio is gonna be a great space for that. So thank you. Um, and Patrick and I walked the grounds a bit and talked about potential spaces. That the trustees might be interested in having converted from sod into. Uh, native plant growing spaces, whether that's a meadow model on the lawn or whether that's more. Uh, working with the established beds that you have there to, uh, augment those. Or to develop a new one, um, that, that complements the established beds. Uh, those are all some of the ideas that we talked about. Um, I see how precious your lawn space is probably for outdoor, uh, activities. So, uh, we focus more on balancing the bed that exists in the front of the building on the right. With the possibility of a new one on the left. So that's where our conversation arrived at as a, as a logical step. Um, the, what the district offers is a landscape designer who specializes in, uh, native plants. Both of our consultants are out of the Conway School of Landscape Design. So that individual would consult on the project, propose a design. And then once approved, uh, the district would fund the plant, um, stock to go in there. So the things that would be helpful to have to enable that planting to happen would be. Um, if you have friends of a library organization or a gardening group that associates or affiliates with your library. Uh, that could help install those plants at some point when it's, when it's, um, been designated and it's been prepared for planting. So, uh, along with that actual demonstration garden that we install and use as an educational, um, outlet. We run educational programming for the public. Um, so that can include, um, programs for adults. Children, a combination of both. Uh, but that would roll out over, starting this winter into and through next summer. Um, and that is a good summary, I think, of the program that we're, that we're proposing and that we're offering to, um. To community partners right now. So I'm happy to answer questions.
I have a question. Um.
Sure.
I, I'm a huge fan. If it left my own devices, I would say, hey, come and turn everything into meadow. But I know we, uh, have to live in the reality that is a town government. Have you done any other municipal, um, plantings in Hadley? Or have you talked to anyone over in Town Hall about, you know, this? Have you gotten any pushback, et cetera?
No, um, I mean, not partnered with any other groups in Hadley, nor have I spoken to local government yet. Um, we're testing for interest first. I, I also work with the Franklin Conservation District and we've been running this program, a similar program. For the past year. So, uh, the model that we're using is to find potential partners. And then because they already exist within the municipal structure, that organization. Um, in one case, let's see, in Leiden, our gardens are actually at the Town Hall and at the library. Uh, in, in Deerfield, they're actually doing a, um, a stream restoration at the elementary school. That it's been overrun with invasives and it's become a degraded, uh, watershed as a result. So we're doing actually, um, uh, intent, uh, an intense eradication of invasives and reinstallation of native plants. Um, in Charlemont, we're working at the public school, uh, Hallamont Elementary. Which serves, its grounds serve as the town park. So we are installing a very large record and buffer there. It's about six feet across by a hundred and forty feet long, uh, native plantings. Um, so I will tell you that when we have floated the ideas to some of these groups, um. Their experience with attempting things on their own in the past, the, the pushback that they have experienced is mostly with. Um, uh, there's probably a better term, but the one that I'm remembering is the road boss. So the people who, um, manage the mowing in municipal spaces. So these are the folks who it's just easier to get on a riding mower and go. Um, and they don't wanna have to be careful or have anything new to tend to, things like that. Um, we are actually in Deerfield where we're doing that stream, um, installation. The, our, our, our contractor who's, who's doing the design and the plan. Is going to train the people responsible for the maintenance of that area on how to do it and when to do it. And it's actually, um, it is more work for them because right now it's just overrun with invasives. But the town in Deerfield has a climate zero plan in place for twenty thirty, and so this is part of that plan. Um, the, uh, situation in Hallamont where it's a large planting and it's right in the middle of. Um, sod field, um, the school is going to, um, manage that. They have a, they have a, a youth program. It's called HEY. It's an acronym. And it's the families that are involved in that program, the children that are enrolled in that program are going to be the ones who, um, maintain that space. Um, and so really the only difference for them is that they'll just have to mow around it. Um, so it's actually less square footage for them to mow. Um, the school will have a fleet of volunteers on a yearly basis that will maintain that space. Um, so I'm curious about how your gardens are maintained now.
Barely.
Sorry, what was that?
I said barely. So basically it would be up to us then to, like, we might have to think about building in the cost of maintaining that, right?
Yes, so, um, so for example, one of the libraries we work with, they have a friends of the library. And those people, um, they, they go out and they do the weeding, you know, in every once in a while. The nice thing about native plants is that they, once they're established, they're very unfussy. Um, I was talking to a woman, so in, in these towns, once we establish a municipal demonstration garden, we roll it out to residents. To take advantage of a personal consultation at their house. And they receive a flat of, it's about a hundred and fifty dollars worth of, of plant, um. What they call plugs, but they're, they're not like the little baby things that we pick up at the local garden centers. They're these massive root systems and the plants are usually about eight to twelve inches tall. So the plugs are like two or three years old actually. And, um, I was laughing with a woman who said, okay, I'm gonna take these home. How much do I need to water them? And we said, you don't need to water them. And she said, okay, well, um, how, how much compost do I put on? Do I put any fertilizer? No, you don't put any fertilizer on them. You don't have to compost. You don't have to mulch. You really just need to weed for the first couple of years until they spread and shade out any weeds that crowd out. Any kind of weeds that are trying to get in there. And really, you could probably weed every other week to once a month in the first couple of years. Um, and our, our conservation priority is that people don't cut the gardens down until like March, April maybe. Uh, because native pollinators are overwintering in the stalks and under the brush of those plants. And so that's why we've seen our insect population plummet by ninety percent in the past couple decades. Um, it's because not only the chemicals that we're using on vegetation, but also because people clean up their gardens in the fall. And all those babies have been laid to rest in those stalks and then they go off to the, to the landfill and die. So, um, that's our, we're doing some training and some, some, some retraining really on how to be. A, an environmentally sensitive gardener too. So we're, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of rehabbing people on, on gardening. This woman laughed because she said, I'm so used to having the baby everything I get from a nursery and it's so much more work. And you have to keep them weeded and you have to keep them watered and you have to feed them so often. And we're like, these are natives. They don't need, they actually don't like too much rich soil. They actually don't like too much fuss, you know, they. They don't wake up at the same time that your greenhouse plants do. They wake up a little bit later and they go a little bit longer in the season. But they're really a lot less effort. So that's my, that's my pitch for, even if you have a fledgling weeding crew. It's pretty, it's pretty manageable over time. And we could help, we could help to coordinate, you know, uh, the start to initiate a launch of, hey, come to these workshops. And sign up to help maintain your library's weeding crew, you know, help, help to come. And that, that actually happened pretty spontaneously when I was running a workshop at one of our growers up in Cummings and at Wing and Affair. Um, the participants in that workshop said, hey, this is a really big property. You maintain your meadow and all the, all the display places. That you have on your property. Can we all come and help sometime maintain your gardens? And somebody else in the group said, hey, and we should do that in our own towns too. We should, and so I got a little list going. And they're, you know, on their own schedules going by. Some people are meeting up as a crew. Some people are just going by when they have an hour with their little weeders, you know? So, um, it's been really interesting and kind of contagious, the enthusiasm around. Doing something environmentally positive, something that's a positive thing to help balance the scale a little bit more. I think people are so inundated with all the bad news.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Uh, and Patrick, I don't know, Allison, maybe you remember, how, uh, was there thought given to the strip of land? That goes down to the senior center that runs next to the parking lot. And borders the, the cornfields. How much of that do we own? Does the town own? Cause that could be a really pretty walkway, like learning walkway.
Yeah, you know how we abut the senior center, we share the parking lot, so, yeah.
On the, on the north side of the parking lot, we abut to a, to a cornfield and someone's home. And I was just thinking, we don't, we don't really have a nice way to walk to the senior center, but this could be like. A kind of an educational, like, it could be really nice. But I don't know how much, like, if we have, you know, three feet, that doesn't work, right? I don't know what we have.
I think there's. I think, isn't there like, I think there're like.
And it might connect the organizations.
Oh, yes, you're right. There are. They did plant a row of our providers that will get bigger. Right? Aren't those little things?
What about the center strip? Isn't there? In the center?
I was just trying to think about connecting the two or.
Yeah.
The senior center involvement and us and like, like connecting those buildings.
I guess that kind of begs the question, is this a, the kind of thing where it's, it's sort of a, a one-off? Do you see this going on over the course of years, the program itself? Such that, you know, five years from now, we might say, wow, that, that really worked out well. Is there any opportunity for doing a separate project on the same parcel, like coming back to Hadley? Whether it's a joint thing between the library and the senior center, which sort of share a site, or the old Goodman Library, which is going to be redeveloped. Is there, do you see an opportunity where this might be a to be continued down the road after we've done one project, say at the front of the library? Is that, is that even done or?
There, there's definitely a possibility of that. We received this grant, so, um, the district is, we are a state entity, which is sort of. Um. As a somewhat redheaded, I'll just say, it's sort of like a redheaded stepchild of the state. So, um, we are, we operate as a nonprofit from grants from the state, but we are guaranteed those grants. Um, mostly from year to year. So there's a possibility that we could build on this in stages. Uh, we are partnering with the Holyoke Senior Center. That's where we're doing, uh, the gardens in the city. And we are focusing on areas in the parking area that lead up to the front of the building because we want it to be. Uh, we want it to be encountered by people. We want people. uh, we want it to be encountered by people. We want people to notice the change. We want people to stop and look at the little signs. Um, scan the QR code on their phone to see what's growing. We, we want it to be an educational outreach thing so that people can learn more about native plants, whether we're doing a workshop or not. So um, it's entirely possible that we could, we could start with one piece, see how it goes with um, maintenance, if that's, you know, if that's the main concern, understandably. Um, and then extend it if we want, and we could, we could focus on that back portion that bridges the space between the two town services.
Do you have photographs that you might be able to share of projects that you have done, even if they're, even if the plants are only this high now?
Right, I can send you some. I don't have any prepared for right now to share on the screen, but I can send you some photos.
And if I would just sort of describe generally what was the project involved and what you were trying to achieve? That would.
Okay, so we um, our goals as the district are to inform people and display how beautiful native plants are. So that they, you know, a lot of people think wildflowers are native plants and they think weeds, right? And a lot of, a lot of them have been cast as that for a long time, goldenrod, right? Um, we, what we're trying to get people to think about is that these native plants and these native pollinators, so that they're so, and many of them endangered at this point, um, have a really close relationship. There are bumblebees that are generalized feeders. They eat off lots of different plants, but there are some plants for which that is the host plant, that is the only host plant for that, that pollinator's um nymph stages. Or that is the only plant that pollinator eats, things like that. So that's, that's our goals. Um, in terms of the design and the function of the space, that is something that our consultant uh listens to the client on and learns more about your priorities, more about what you'd like to see there or, you know. Uh, for example, at the senior center in Holyoke, you know, there are these little pro- projections, these little median like parking buffers that are right along parking spaces. So we want their, they're thinking about there being something there, but not that falls over so that when people are trying to open their doors, they're fighting with the plants, you know? So being sensitive to the u- utility of the space, the purpose of the space, and the sensibility of the client. So that would, it would be kind of a both and situation when we decide what is in the spot.
So if we say yes tonight, we're committing ourselves to working with you to come up with a solution that works for your mission as well as for us. It's not, hey, we're committing to this exact thing, right, right? I mean, we're committing to a timeframe. And then the next step would be?
Right, the next step would be um, for our consultant to meet with you, and you don't have to come in tonight. You can deliver.
No, I understand. I'm just hearing, thinking through, right? What happens?
Right.
What happens with the town, right? So we do live in the town. So do you, do you, is the next step, do, do we meet with a consultant, they design something and then we take it to the town, or do we go to the town parks?
Right, so that's a good, that's a great question. Um, because some of these libraries, they actually have, they have authority over their own green space. So if, if there are other people, friends in the town, uh, staff that we need to approach, um, I could certainly write to the town and uh, contact and say, um, we've had a conversation with the library trustees about this idea. Um, we'd like to advance it to a conversation with you. Uh, the next stages are to select a space where this can go forward. After that, it's to bring in a consultant and have them meet with the, with the trustees or whoever gets to decide what goes in that, what goes in the ground, whether it's you guys or whether it's someone from the town offices. Um, that conversation happens and then the designer gets back with a plan and presents the plan to you guys or whoever makes the decision. Um, and then once the, the plan is approved, then the space is prepared. The plant stock is ordered. Um, and depending on what time of year we're in at that point, the plants would go in the ground probably in the spring or next fall. Some people decided to defer into the fall this year. Just because of other circumstances and it was a really wet spring, so a lot of stuff was rotting in the ground. And perennials were, were not doing well. Um, so that's the, that's the gist. It's not a hard line. There's a lot of room for conversation in the process. Um, I've found that people involved really vary from project to project. So um, who would your people be that we would need to be in touch with at the town?
I think that's, yeah, I think that is, uh, that would be probably the DPW folks. I, I don't really see them having a problem with this. As long as it's, you know, not majorly affecting their
Mowing.
mowing, which is pretty much all to do for us on the outside. I mean, they'll, you know, in the fall, they'll um, pick up the leaves and then what have you, but that's more or less the extent of what they do in terms of landscaping. They don't water, they don't maintain, they don't weed. Um.
Mowing is still amiable. If it doesn't interfere with those two things.
Yeah, so that's pretty much it. But I, I think again, if, if we're just telling them this is a distinct area, you're gonna mow around it. It's not gonna create any more problem than anything else that's on the site. I don't see why they would have any um, objection to the proposal. I don't, is there anyone else that we would be, I can't think of who else we would get to talk to. We didn't talk, we, we moved.
It's a matter of courtesy. I would certainly let the conservation commission know. And I would let the board of selected beings know, not asking permission, but.
Right, like the Stanley Green Committee, right?
Right, yes.
Like, there's a lot of folks that I think would be interested and might wanna participate, and especially in the educational opportunities, but in terms of
Right, moves though.
clearance, yeah, who, that's really what I was thinking of.
Just that. Anybody else? Seventy, any questions or comments?
So I have a question about that. Um, who does it make sense or who would it be best received? Um, how would that news be best received um, by us? Is there a specific sender that would be the best person to send that information or communications about this project?
Send it to the library.
You mean who on our end would receive, who would be the point person?
Right, who, who among us?
Yeah, that would be me, most likely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And if you need a description or um, a sequence from me, I'm happy to write that down with you, Patrick, so you can include it if you'd like. Yeah.
Great, thanks. Anything else? I think that's all we've got tonight. Uh, thank you so much for making time and thank you for your patience there.
Yeah, no, thank you for inviting me. I'll talk to you soon.
Okay.
Good night.
That felt pretty close. Not the all-time Zoom fail, but pretty close.
No, whatever. We all fell together. It was a collective fail, Patrick. Don't take it on you.
She was very gracious, yeah, to, to us.
That's exciting.
Yeah, that sounds very.
Yeah, it seems like a great opportunity. It's almost too good to be true. It really does seem like a, a win-win for everyone involved, but.
It is a nice. So I make a motion to go ahead. And proceed to, you know, I guess the next step would be for you to find out if there's any objections, but my motion is that we should proceed the next step. Second.
Further discussion? I think my one comment might be that I would like this to be someplace, I'm not sure that putting a matching or symmetrical bed someplace else in front is going to be in a place that will draw attention and be visible so that people make the effort to go and look at it. And I am thinking of the program this past summer for children when there were the animals out on the front lawn. And a gajillion little people and parents and caregivers. Um, which suggests to me that we do need, on occasion, some space for that kind of an activity. Um, but I was thinking, well, would you be able to put it along the sidewalk just out here? But then I thought about salt and snow. And that might be problematic.
That's why I asked, if, what, if, if we said yesterday, are we committing to that? Cause I sort of agree. Once I heard you want people to be seeing it, et cetera, I thought, well, that's tucked away. I love it. I think for beauty's sake, it's great there, but if the goal is educational. So that's why I asked, that's a very specific question. Are, by saying yes, are we committing to this area that you guys have already discussed? And answer is no. But I feel like, like you, those questions can all be addressed like later. I feel like she was open to it, and unless anyone here is not open to it.
Oh, the concept, I'm certainly in favor of. I'm just thinking about the practical matters and when she explained the educational portion, even if we invite them to give programs, you know, that includes walking past there and talking about exactly what we have and then what you can do at your home, da, 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 da. I mean, that will certainly draw attention to it, but if it's someplace that gets ambient attention without a specific effort on the part of people who come to the building, that strikes me as a more desirable option, if there is one of those.
You could certainly revamp one of the existing beds that's sort of languishing. I mean, there, there's several options for that, but um, you know, one thing that came to my mind when this was presented to us was that, you know, that strip along, and, and again, this is not prominent real estate, but that whole strip along the back driveway.
Hmm, uh huh.
That is wanting to revert to
It is.
a meta-state, like that just wants to be a meta.
It does.
Um, and you know, there are times when I look at it, cause we, I mean, we have to clean it up and we've been lucky to have a few volunteers that have come. I've gone out there and spent a Saturday cleaning it up. It, it's sort of like, well, it's too bad that we're, I mean, it seems like we're at cross purposes with what the space wants to do. So that would be a great
Yeah.
spot to like have it just grow wild the way it wants to and then not have to maintain it.
Yeah.
Because it's a royalness. The pachycephaloid maybe will fill in eventually, but I don't think it's ever gonna keep those weeds up because the things that grow up are bigger. And like six feet tall, whatever they are.
Those lattices, the wild lettuce, carrots.
Crazy stuff.
Yeah, well, I think from what she said, all of this can be open to discussion. We just have to say yes and then make sure there's no objections and then those conversations will.
Is there any further discussion or are we ready to vote? All in favor of pursuing this? Good. Okay. Back to visioning, data collection, next steps?
Well, when we left off, we were talking about pros and cons of having a visioning session. Either internally or both internally and with.
I, I have a thought, um. So we're talking about getting community feedback about what we want the library to be. To, to build a plan, a long-term plan for the future, to see how we change things. Is that right?
Possibly.
Yeah, I mean, as, as you're talking that, I'm, I'm thinking, can you also, can we also take short-term feedback and try things? And, and with the idea, we're just gonna try this for a few months to see how, how the public reacts to it and then maybe this could become part of us or, or not. So, so we could have more immediate feedback for some suggestions and, and long, long-term for other things. It just seems like that would be nice.
Well, I think that some of the things that, that, you know, are in that bulleted list that, that we shared, it could be that we do something kind of small scale to kind of get a little bit of feedback. And that's also a way of kind of establishing with the community, like we're, we're interested in hearing from you and in, and we're in responding to you and that, that may help build towards being able to do a, you know, a, a more effective visioning process.
Right.
Right? We've got more people invested in some small changes, so that could be, that could be a strategy.
I would just stop for the one observation that if we are going to appear to be responsive, it would be good to have the results in time to incorporate anything that requires money, which is just about everything in time for budgeting.
Unless it was something we were gonna fund from our own.
Yes.
Right, but depending on.
Like adding more hours or something like that, that you, for sure.
But if it was something programming
Yeah.
and we said, oh, this is exactly what we wanna do with the Sharp Smiths Fund.
Yes.
Right? Like, that would actually be something we could just completely do.
Right.
So.
But if it has a budget impact.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily. I guess I should've said budget impact, not just financial.
How long has the new library been open? How long has it been here?
We moved in, in November of twenty twenty. And then we opened to the public right at the beginning of the fiscal year, the following summer, so twenty twenty-one. People come in in July, June, July. So two, two years, but we've been in here for two and a half. That's right, yeah.
Me, my only other thought is that there's, there's something to be said for just letting things settle and kind of work their way into, not a lull, but just a nice smooth sailing for a while. Um, you know, you've had staff changes, you're about to have a little bit more of staff change, like, just letting things settle and let people take a breath and you know, just be happy with what we have for a little bit, you know, and and nurture it along and, and really establish well what is here and now. And provide a firm foundation for the things that are, are basic in a library, you know? The amount of books and the type of books you have and you, you know, your own staff well-being and people are getting used to the hours and learning to navigate the building. And it's been two years, but there's still been a lot of change going on in those two years for a new building. I think the idea is valid, but I think it's also valid to let let things simmer for a little while, you know, and let people feel firm, with the foundation first.
I think that makes sense. And I think, you know, we do glean a lot of information just from talking to people. You know, sort of like the grocer standing up from the shop. I mean, you kind of get a sense of what the demand is. It's not scientific.
Yeah.
Um, but at the same time, you're not, you know, you're gonna respond a lot more to the people that come forward and say, you know, have you thought about this? Have you thought for collections? Have you thought about that? I mean, you know, I, I do start to notice when you get multiple people asking a certain to do a question. If a question has been raised about something, you know, it's really not. To me, the, the question of hours is really not that complicated. That's actually one of the easier things that we can address because it really is just a matter of whether the town funds it or not. It's a matter of, you know, if you want it, then get out there, just like we did to build this, stand on the street corner, library needs more hours. And at budget time, and we can, we can try to do that. That's not a problem. I think it's more complicated when you get to, um, you know, the whole other areas that we're not currently providing. So like, you know, for instance, the library of things. A great idea for a lot of logistical things that we have to think about and that, you know, to, to figure those things out takes a lot of time from, you know, from staff to, to make them a reality and figure out how to, how to go forward. So I'm more, I'm, I'm, it's, the hours thing is easy, other things are harder. Um, I'm always curious. There will be a lot of things that, um, we're already going to be adding. So, you know, finding out that there's twenty other things that we're gonna be adding to, to get overwhelmed. But I do, I do think that it would be a good thing for us to be able, even just passively, be able to accept feedback from people, just comments, that, you know, to your point, John, of, you know, the idea, whether it's an actual box or whether it's just a form, but something that people can approach and, and just say, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll take any suggestions or any feedback. Um, and you know, we'll we'll take any suggestions or any feedback and try to learn from them. And see if there are trends.
That's a definitely a valid approach, right? And which doesn't require any immediate change. If you go out and start asking questions. It does imply that you're gonna have change, which to your point can potentially add to people's stress if they. By stress, I mean like ours and staff that people would have to do the things, right? It could cause some stress versus if you did a passive. Collection online or whatever. So to John's point, we want to do something. You know, and then we just sort of talked about what we've seen, you know, every three months we say, hey, this is what's come in and we. Make it a point to actually talk about it at this meeting and then, you know, one year from now, we say, okay, if we've collected this stuff from here. Do do we need to do anything like big with this? Do we, is now the time for the visioning? Is now the time for a big survey? I mean, that's definitely about, you know, suggestion.
Yeah, I I don't want it to be characterized though as as a matter of, you know, to to do these things or not do these things. So we're not making the decision based on whether they're going to create stress. I don't think it's really a matter of stress. It's just a matter of. It is a matter of resources. It is a matter of people just having finite attention spans.
Totally.
Uh, cause that's where it creates stress. Like at at the end of the day, we're like, you know, somebody asked me to do something two months ago and I haven't done.
Yeah, oh, totally.
Just there just aren't enough hours a day. So, um, that's really what it comes down to. And it's, you know, if if we can. Dream it up and we can fund it, then we can make it, we can make it a reality, especially if you have. You know, people that are invested from the community, whether, I mean, again, members of the trustees, the friends, other volunteers that want to get involved. Um, I mean, the library to me as a metaphor, it's just like that, you know, that grass that's wanting to grow up along that strip. That's what I've wanted to see is like what will grow up here by people just coming into the space and using it for their own purposes. What community interests are there that will reveal themselves by people just coming in and seeing that this is an available space? All kinds of things are happening here and they have. Nothing to do without a planning or any intention behind it. It's just created a space and now all kinds of groups are meeting here. On all kinds of subjects that are interests.
And like, we voted to approve this, right? So this is a big thing that's gonna be happening over the next year. So it's, you know, so we already have something that's happening that's going to require some, you know, collective energy.
Is it possible to. Distribute. To the town. Pieces of paper in the water bill or the tax bill?
Yes. Yes.
What we're down to do with that.
That's what we do with our survey.
Mm hmm.
So we did that with our survey and I just helped the have the, uh. Russell School Committee do that. They got almost no paper surveys. We got almost no paper surveys. But I would think even if you do this, I I don't know what like what you're thinking, but you can do a QR code and send someone online from the water. Yeah.
Well, I was thinking more just an open ended. Request for feedback. And let people. Without a tremendous number of prompts. We have this new space. Let us know what you think about it. Let us know what you'd like to see. Let us know if there's something that we can do better. So that it's not such a formal survey per se, but if. Rather than directing people to say, you know, go to the suggestion box.
Can can we do it in more than one? Uh, phase? So so we get suggestions and then we go through the suggestions and we. Put out another one saying, these are some things that have been suggested. We'd like more community feedback on on this.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking for a starting point. And. Rather than have us. Something that's more open ended. That allows people to. Comment on any variety of topics. Re- related to how they either perceive the library or use the library, um.
If our goal was to collect open ended information from the public, I would still recommend that we do that online, not.
Right, you know, no, I wasn't, I wasn't imagining inserting a survey. I was imagining, you know, a one third sheet of paper. That says, please go to this website to just a QR.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Do a thing. Yeah, with a QR code, you have to. Do it on your device rather than set that a real.
Example.
You can.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, right, but I wonder if that.
Well, then I'm gonna ask again, what? What we, what are we collecting information on? And I'm gonna circle right back to say. If we just, if we put out a survey that says open ended, what do you think of the library? What's working? What doesn't work? Like. Talk about anxiety. People don't, well, it is, it is a lot to process. The processing of that is extremely time consuming.
Yeah.
But the. The two things, one, if people don't know why they're doing it, we're asking this survey because. We're going to do X, right? If you don't say that, their minds run away with them. So we have to have a clearly stated, why are we asking you this, right? That had the Russell School said, this is, we're gonna, we wanna take this to the CPA. We don't know what you recommend. Please help us. What are your priorities, right? So I don't.
Their minds might run in lots of different directions, or like I would just dismiss it. I would just be like, whatever, like they always want comments, like.
Like, yeah, it's an open ended invitation for people to get mad at us.
Yes.
That's what I meant by anxiety.
Yeah.
Oh, like an open ended invitation for someone to be like. I want ten more hours a week and then like I said, I wanted that, what like.
Right, or I'm still mad that you built the building.
I don't actually care about that, but I mean, the it's built.
But it's a waste of our time to.
That I don't care, but I mean that. I worry that it leads people to believe that some idea they have may be able to happen. Even if financially it can't happen, like.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not to say we can't do this open ended. Survey, but we should say why specifically, we we should put some range.
And I I would say, I personally have found, I know this is not everyone, but I have found that people are fairly forward of just reaching out. I mean, we got all kinds of inquiries about can we do this? Can we do that? Um, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And you know, I don't find that people are that shy when they feel strong, some strongly enough. About something that they feel that they have something to comment or contribute, they will reach out through. As I mentioned, through, you know, the forum on the town website and I'll get the comment or the question, a phone call, an email. Comment at the desk, which that makes its way to me. Um, so not saying that I hear every community sentiment, but I feel like in terms of like what we're talking about, just to like an informal. Just Rorschach test, I feel like we kind of get that on a weekly basis of just for dealing with the public agenda.
That's fine.
Um.
And that's sort of your, hey, can we have a, you know, a specific thing on the website or a specific form somewhere that we just collect and talk about?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that might be enough for a while.
Mm hmm.
Sure.
So we sort of have put three different types of things on the table. Having a a large scale visioning exercise. Either internally or externally, um, or both. Having a survey of some sort. Or having a a sort of more low key collection. Online comment box, et cetera, that we would be revising. So like if I'm summarizing what. Like the categories of things I've heard. So. We could, we could vote on it tonight. We could sit on it and come back with the intent that we're going to vote on a direction at the next meeting. I I'm open. I'm just trying to lead the conversation.
So I have a question that I think might inform this, which is, does it feel like we're sort of. Like the library doesn't have a rudder right now. Like, does it feel like we don't have a sense of kind of? Like, when you're making decisions about like. Programming or what have you, does it feel like there's something missing in terms of like guidance and priorities and. Mission or something that we can help to inform through this process? Or does it feel like, like you depicted, we're in a place where we kind of like know what we're doing? Like, you know, like, yep, let's have some smooth sailing for a little while and, you know. Adjust some things, build some things, but but like kind of stay the course from like the vision that led to the building. So I'm just wondering, what are your senses about a pressing need?
I don't feel, I don't feel a pressing need in terms of in in operational terms, because I feel like. We're, you know. Busy every day implementing, doing, you know, doing things. I don't think we've needed to. I think we got one. Gentle prod and it wasn't even really a necessary problem at the beginning of, you know, being open again. Taking directional trustees, we're here, we're open, we want to see a lot more programming and that's what we did. We got busy. Doing that, um, and I think we succeeded. I I don't really see that so much as more my sense of. Um, it's sort of it no different than how how I feel when I interact with the friends, for instance. And that I'm sort of like an honorary friend there to somehow implement their. Whatever their vision is and to make to make it work with the library, you know, with our library operation. Uh, so that we're all facing the same way and not against each other. And I feel like with the trustees. The it's. It wa- was very easy for me personally when we were in the process of constructing this library, because there was just this steady. This is what you're working towards. These are the end goal. I mean, the MBLC did a great job setting up all the mile markets that you need to work towards. And I don't know that, you know, internally, like to we, have we replaced that? Process with some other set of pro- processes that we want to work forward and then I I then, you know, work. By day to make sure that the goals are met by the next time that we meet or whatever the deadline is. Um, you know, we talked a lot about. Um, fundraising continuing, whether it's a capital campaign or fundraising for some other purpose. I think there's a lot of work that we can do there, but we have a lot of, we already have a lot of funds. That had been given to us that we haven't necessarily figured out, well, what are we going to do with these funds? Should we be? You know, setting goals every year and benchmarks and how we how we use those. I feel like there's a lot of conversation that we shouldn't have. Sort of figure out what's the, you know, which way are we facing now?
I'd say I agree with that. Like, like with what you've got.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to add on more, let's look at what we.
More would be okay, but I just feel like we have, we already have like a bunch of stuff that we haven't really necessarily articulated. What are we, you know, what are we doing? Or what are, you know, what are the, what are the goals for? Um, you know, for for the next ten years or the next five years, whatever it is, a long range plan. Uh, you know, it's goals that could then influence the actual long range plan that we file with the Board of Library Commissioners saying. This is what the library is doing, cause that's what we talked about.
That's the thing, we actually have like, I think all of you don't maybe know that you have to have a long range plan.
Yeah.
With the library, what a library commissioner. And that, to me, that's what I feel like if I were to say we're missing anything, I don't, I don't think we're missing anything sort of day to day, but I do think. We are missing a long term. Vision, like if I were to recruit another library trustee, what would I say their job is? What do they do besides come to the meeting once a month and you, you know, evaluate project once a year, you know, like. Wh- what is the vision? What role do you play? Um, but it to me, uh, at this point, it doesn't involve community. So but whether that's the right answer or the wrong, and it's something to say, I don't care about the community. Because I do, but I think that we don't collectively have any sort of vision. First for the library, can't then go to say, hey, what do you think about this? You know? So I would kind of agree with your sentence.
And I I do, just to add on to that, I feel like that everything that we have done has created. Um. A resiliency for this, for the for the organization, for the for the library. Um, I think that our success with fundraising as hard as it was. But, you know, knowing how that goes and sort of learning from your mistakes, that's given us a lot more control of our faith. Than we had ten years ago. And I think that 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 to me is like really the most important thing is to really be in control. Of our operation and not be at the at the whim of external circumstances, because again, if. People continue to contribute money to the library, that makes us powerful. If someone in the community says, I want you to do X, Y, and Z. We say, yeah, that's something, great idea, and here's the money. You know, it's not a struggle. It's like, yeah, sure, we can do that. It's done the hard work of raising the money. So that to me is like, it's job one and as hard as it is, I think that's really something. That I would love to see us continue to build on, because we've done a great job so far.
So that seems to point more towards an internal visioning process that then. And I don't know if that just means just us or if it's us and the staff altogether or. But but something that's a little bit more in-house.
Well, do we want to vote on something, whether it's this or do nothing or survey? Do we want to vote on something tonight? Are we, is a goal for tonight to come to a resolution or is the goal for tonight to discuss? Is this like a first reading and then we vote next time? I I don't know what. I personally would like to vote next time, and the reason I say that is that, um. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners does give guidance on visioning. So maybe if we could find that guidance and read it, then we could decide if it's for us or not, right? Like, are we able to undertake this?
Right.
Whereas if we commit to that right now, we don't know what we're committing to, right? Like, so I I would like to at least. Revisit the Mass Board of Library Commissioners guidance on visioning before I vote it. I mean, if everyone else wants to vote, I'm fine, but that's just, um, how I feel.
That sounds, that's reasonable. That's great, cause one of my, yeah, I was about to ask like. What does this process look like and where might we find some guidance?
All right. Then that's how we. Let's talk just like this, he said.
Then you could, sir, take time to say something.
Okay, so I can update you on, um, kind of, I took kind of the lead on the fundraising. And I'm thinking about two routes right now that we should go and I have a question for the board. I would like to create a brochure, a simple start. How to get to the library, how to get different ways to get to the library, you know, name. Will you can give in your will, you can have a naming opportunity. You can give to our capital fund or you could give to friends. And that's my question. Like, I'd like to go to friends, like, do you all agree that we should put friends on there? And like, kind of get a statement from them, like, if you give to the friends, here's what you're giving to, here's where your money goes. Here's how to give to the friends. If you go to capital fund, here's where your money goes, here's what happens, and the same with naming opportunities.
Yeah, I I do think we, before we do that, we should have a conversation though about what are all, because I mean, there are avenues to give that. We're, you know, people do all the time to send a check and it goes to a general gift fund. That is, that is an option. Um, whether we want to push them in that, we want to like formalize that as a direction? Do we want to like? Push them to do it some other way, like have it, you know, go to a new fund for the community foundation that this is essentially the same thing. I mean, we should talk about like what, what all.
So you are thinking, I think we realized there was a conversation about having a different fund.
It's not, it's not a conversation. I'm just saying like there is that reality that when somebody sends a check for one hundred dollars or ten thousand dollars and it just says, how do you public library?
Well, that goes to the town.
Goes to the town.
And it winds up, and and I thought we were trying to, and and I'm sorry, I have that like lapse of a few years.
Yeah.
That we were trying to kind of s- stop that a little bit and put it more into our funds for our future, so we can have an endowment one day or. Um.
Absolutely, but we, if we're trying to, again, if we're trying to intentionally divert something to, you know, one way or the other, we would need to be very clear about what. You know, what the purpose is and does that duplicate the the. Function of having those funds, which are more or less open to whatever purpose, as far as I can tell, I don't have seen any limitation on.
So maybe I can call you because it'll look to you and we could just kind of go through this and then I can bring it back to the board. Is that okay? And the second question I have for fundraising is. Full linen on this originally. Do we want to go back to the idea of having a gala? Do we want to, you know, we never opened and had a gala. We tried, COVID pre-hit. Like, we'll bring back COVID. But, um, you know, it was really kind of a nice and special idea and is that something? That we want to think about doing again? Um, we never celebrated the opening of this library.
I mean, we did in like various ways and had a small, but we never did like a big kind of grand opening. We couldn't.
So is there an anniversary date coming up that would be a natural time to do that?
We could look that up.
Very nice anniversary, it's the anniversary that we got the grant.
That's when we jumped up and down.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's something coming up, so you have time to plan for it, we can use that date. Just because logistically it works.
Yes.
Okay, and I know that there are people that are not us, that would be really interested in putting on a gala. Like, so I think we could find people that like putting on a gala. We did last time, we had like.
Party animals.
Yeah, we have those people. Okay, and then the last thing I just want to say is not related, it is about the Right to Read program I said I was working on. Um, I have been in touch with Annie McKenzie. Uh, we are trying to shoot for the middle of October. Patrick, I need to talk to you a little bit about, um, the film will cost three hundred and fifty dollars. We will wind up with a DVD for our collection after that night. The, the, um, school district wo- is implementing the science of reading, so they, I've asked Annie if she could point, give me the name of somebody that might want to be able to talk to us about Hadleys, you know, how Hadley is implementing the science of reading, Marvine, who is, um, right now, kind of fascinating. She works on Dr. Seuss's house, right? They opened Dr. Seuss's house to her in, in her study of the science of reading and she is, she has opened up, um, she has a PhD in in educational psychology and is doing work on the science of reading. She will be a panelist for us. And I said I'd be willing to to do it since I am kind of certified in the science of reading. But I'm having to have to have the school people first, because I think that would be better. Um, and then we'll show the movie and then we'll have a panel discussion. We're hoping for October eleventh or the eighteenth. I just have a quick question about where the funds would come from. Like, do I go to the friends? Is this the roof? Do we come out of like
I mean.
The Charlotte.
If, you know, if you want to kind of stick with the friends' intention to do this all once a year, well, I'm actually looking about that. No, there's not extra funding for the, because that would just pay for the license, but, um, I I would think that that's something that we could just do from either whatever, whether any money is allowed, it's just minimal, or, you know, from League Meg funds or library gift funds.
It might be nice, honestly, to take it out of a fund that someone gave us and honor their name and give people that idea, like really put that name forward, right? Like, the John Doe, you know, film on Right to Read, you know, this is, you know, this is why. It it might give people ideas about giving.
That's a good idea. I like.
Yeah, I mean, the one that comes to mind is the door of the urge, um.
Cause she was a reading specialist.
What's that? Right, but I don't know that there's any, I don't think there's anything, I think that fund may be more or less depleted. We haven't had anything from that family.
Could we, could we talk about that?
We can look, but I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure there's, you know, not, not much in the tank.
Well, maybe they still give in her name, even though there's not money left, and it like, no, she did give money, like, like, you know, it was somebody who so that's what I'm working on, I'm just letting you all know.
So don't we need to vote to authorize the money if you're aiming for an October?
You would have to vote to authorize, by the point.
So I'm just gonna make a motion.
Do we, I I would just ask, do we need a vote to, to spend three hundred dollars for League Meg or whatever source?
Better to than not.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just saying, like, with incomplete information before looking at what's available, I think that there's plenty of there's no shortage of places that are, that have money and that are appropriate. So I don't, I mean.
Well, how about if we have a motion to approve the expenditure required to purchase the rights to show this from available gift or state monies on hand?
I was just gonna move to authorize it out of League Meg unless there was enough available on the Urch Fund, since that's our.
Well, we'll just say from League Meg or gift funds.
Go make the motion, I'll write it down.
I move that we authorize the expenditure of, is it three hundred dollars?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty dollars to purchase rights. Rights and DVD. From available funds that are either gifts or Lake Meg. Second?
Second thought?
Oh, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan, for organizing.
Do we have any other topics or items before we go into a brief executive session?
I have only one thing that I should have asked you to put on the agenda super quick. Do we have an update on the twenty twenty-two donor shelf?
Uh, on when it will be installed? If you know, I have not heard from, uh, Dan. Hey, wow, I would all love to see what he's got. I wouldn't, I'm trying to remember when we sent that off.
Wow.
It was, yeah.
And there was only like twenty names, so it, yeah. I just, your idea of the gala gave me the reminder that, oh, we have another opportunity to celebrate at some point. You know, that's another natural thing, not, not that it's a gala, there's not that many people.
No, but that could.
Yep.
If it were installed just prior to the gala, that could.
No, I was thinking it's another opportunity, a for a smaller gathering, to honor those folks when we unveil it, so.
And I should, I should say, we've had many, many inquiries from people based on coming in and saying, you know, seeing it and saying, how do I get a book?
Yeah, yeah, it may need to work somewhere.
Yeah. Would actually be great, but, um, I I can't really say that it has actually turned into a lot of donations, but, um, there's been a lot of interest.
Well, maybe if there's like availability in a Q QR code or something.
Yeah, I think if we made, if we made some sort of publicity push for that, I mean, we would get a response.
Okay, anything else? Then I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of contact, contract negotiations with, out any intention of returning to open meeting.
Second.
And we each need to vote individually to do so? Yes.
Yes.
Kind of seems.